Call the meeting to. Call the meeting to order at six thirty-three. We're gonna do the flag salute. Roll call.
Ms. Bolenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Chandler.
Here.
Ms. Compatello's absent. Mr. LaVassar is currently absent. Mr. Marx?
Here.
Mr. Oliverio?
Here.
Mr. Reddila?
Here.
Mayor Perry?
Here.
Engineer Flynn?
Here.
Here. And I don't know if.
Solicitor.
I can't even read that. So, but we do have a quorum.
Okay. First, the first thing I want to mention to counsel directly that before we get to anything on the agenda, that you should always feel the ability to ask questions and not feel bad about that. The way you vote should not be judged. You can vote however you want. You're representative of the community. So I don't care how many questions you want to ask. If you have a thousand questions, you have the right to ask those questions and you have the right to vote however you please. Any questions on that at all? Okay, thank you. All right, public comments on agenda items. At this time, citizens may address the Crafton Borough Council on any issue appearing on today's agenda. Only residents and taxpayers of the borough of Crafton will be permitted to address the council. Comments on non-agenda items will be taken at the end of today's meeting. Speakers will be permitted to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Groups of people will be required to designate a spokesperson to represent them before the council, who may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Please sign in and raise your hand or raise your hand on Zoom and state your name and physical address for the record. Also, before we do that, Mr. LaVassar, I said prior to you getting here that anybody can feel the ability to ask any questions, as many questions as you want during any of our council meetings, and you should never feel bad about the way you vote. You're representing the community. And however you vote is your choice as an elected council member. All right, not just for you, for everybody else. Okay, we have two people that would like to speak. The first one is AJ. AJ, feel free to take the mic.
Quick note for anyone who's going to speak, make sure the mic is turned on by the button on the bottom, and you'll see a green light on the front of the mic.
So the only thing I wanted to say is I did bring some exhibits if in the course of discussion, exhibits that we had used through the steering committee meetings, and that's just to clarify things. I know some of you have been spending time thinking about things, asking additional questions. So those, I moved over to Justin's desktop, so I'll leave that up to you guys. So if there is a question, just raise and I'll jump up and try to help him find the file and et cetera. Any questions on that?
Thank you, AJ. Okay. Eric Vell? Vell shift.
You have to do something.
Test. Alright, hey, I brought.
Where do you live, Eric?
I'm sorry.
Eric, where do you live?
Seventy-eight Belvedere Street in Crafton. I brought a handout for each of you. I'm gonna summarize it at a very high level.
That's all right.
Alright, so just, I'm a big fan of the plan. I was on the committee. I think that really good work was done. What I've done is prepared kind of a guiding light for you through my lens. This is not the committee. This is my personal commentary. I just wanted to give you some, through my work and what I do, some things that I want you guys to think about. One is moving equity forward. The other is the hardening of the assets we have currently within the borough. The other is smart budgeting, which we're very well known for throughout Pennsylvania, Western Pennsylvania for sure. The idea of adopting a brand strategy as we move to solidify some of these infrastructure investments, having a constant theme so that roofs match and things look non-dissimilar, or at least complementary. I then went through each of the sites, Linwood and Noble, where I think that a really significant investment should be made. I itemize exactly what I feel the investment should be made through the lens of DCR grant. I go through Crafton Park through the lens of DCR grant and what we should be doing there. One of the things I've heard throughout the community repeatedly is the need for a dog park. I explained how we can accomplish that through the DCR grant and still moving equity forward and supporting the Linwood and the Noble properties. I then move forward to the public works. I challenge you all to not wait for manna from heaven, as AJ calls it, that we think about ways to open a property now. It's in the public domain, let's use it. Think about creative strategies that we can do, and I'll give you some examples. Crafton Shark Hills Park, open it. The Army Corps of Engineers Trail, open it. Clearview Trail. I don't know if anyone reads a TRIB here. I don't. I happened to see an article, though, from the TRIB about the Trolley Trail expansion from the West End. That investment is the perfect thing for us to go after the GTRP. It's highly competitive, but this is a very political sensitive nature. We are in a great position to be able to win that. That's not due for a little while. I have some closing comments. I do believe that investing in parks over infrastructure is a failure. I live on a street with thirty-three potholes that will ruin your car if you drive the speed limit down that street. If we're doing these things, sands the investment in infrastructure. I am deeply opposed, even though I was on the committee that put the plan together. That's it. Thank you.
Can you repeat your last sentence there?
Yes.
Yeah.
I am deeply opposed to us investing in parks over infrastructure, core infrastructure. I use example in here of Vietta or Foreign. The other one that was really comes to light, that's a perfect example, is the Park Street condominiums or townhomes or whatever it was. That failed. Why? Because they gotta sink a million dollars into the ground, is that right? In order for them to develop it. They gotta sink a million. Why? Because we don't have the infrastructure to support the development. So if we really are, according to Thrive, using that as our strategic lighthouse, we're failing. Infrastructure has to take that priority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
See, I have a question, Eric, if you have a second. So I mean, while just kind of glancing briefly through each of the site-based commentaries that you have here, you mentioned the DCR grant specifically for Crafton Park, but as it stood on the agenda, we were talking about a DCR grant due April sixth for just Noble and Linwood.
Yeah, I'm suggesting retooling much just a bit.
Okay.
Yep, so one fifty of the, so two fifty is us, two fifty is them. It's matched, right? Keep it. Not sure where that money came from, four million dollar budget, having two hundred and fifty grand just rallying around seems surprising to me, but no one else has operating surpluses, let alone construction windfalls, right? I have a school district that had to eliminate three buildings, they'd eliminate one because of cost surpluses or a cost, cost excesses, excessive, yes, overages, yes. So what I'm suggesting is a hundred and fifty that goes into Linwood. Specific site improvements like the ADA parking, right? The compliance that we need there. The idea that I play basketball there, you can't play a full game of basketball there because there's a sinkhole in the middle of the court. Can't do it. Can't do it. That needs fixed. The fences, but just to get it, hundred and fifty there, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand into Noble, and I explain what that is. The fence is there is atrocious. It's atrocious. It's an eyesore. It's an eyesore in our community. Our centralmost park should be beautiful. Two hundred and fifty thousand there won't go very far, but it'll go a long way for the improvements that I spelled out. And then finally, a hundred thousand dollars, eighty, sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand is a dog run. Right now, it's currently used as a dog run illegally by us and many other citizens in town and people who don't live in town. Walk through it and you'll see the evidence. Carefully walk through it. So formalizing that strategically, going after the grant to get that done is a big win for the community. They've spoken through the community planning process. While you're at it and the hood's up, there's twenty thousand dollars in there for some sort of a infrastructure thing. There's some sort of a house, some sort of a shelter. Great. And while the hood's up, take it all the way to a hundred thousand and expand the memorial field to be the spontaneous play area that continues to the bottom of Sled Riding Hill. It still keeps the lion's share of the investment going to the parklets, but it does expand that to accomplish something that has been deeply popular within the park planning process. Set up?
Thank you.
Do we have any hands raised on Zoom? All right, great. Okay, so from our prior meeting, we have the DCR grant resolution. So I'll read this. It's middle of a five hundred thousand dollar project application for phase one renovations of Linwood and Noble Park. Grant funds would cover up to two hundred and fifty K for the project with the remainder of the funds coming from the borough. So at our last meeting, this was up for discussion. We tied a three-way vote or three-three vote. The mayor deflected to this meeting, so now we are here to potentially vote again. So any thoughts, discussions, or does anybody want to make a motion as is proposed here?
Can we have discussion prior to that, or would you like to have it after the motion's made?
Go ahead. Prior's fine.
Okay.
Okay, then if we're gonna discuss ahead of time, since I'm the one that called this meeting, I would like to have a few words.
Sure.
All right, so instead of break the tie, I called the special meeting because I believe it is the role of council. And what I heard at that meeting is that this council didn't feel like they had enough information or enough time. And I think there, what I want to say is that I've been involved with this project for a long time. Everyone knows that I support it. And what I think that I, that we have is we've had a number of mistakes of timing and communication, and we should have done better. And to to confirm what you said about everybody's right to have the information that they need and to vote what they think is the right thing. That's why we're here tonight. So I think some of the blame comes, and I apologize for any part that I've had in this, from the years-long process it takes to get anything done when we're talking about grant funding and getting projects in the ground. For instance, the previous council approved a grant application for the study probably in early twenty twenty. We got the grant awarded in twenty twenty-one. We started the study in the middle of twenty twenty-one. We're finishing it up, and it's always been targeted to try and meet the yearly DCR schedule, which is April of this year. If we do that, that will mean that we will hear at the end of twenty twenty-three or the end of twenty twenty-two, so that we can put this in motion for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So that's a four-year cycle to have the idea that we should be putting effort and investment into our parks to getting anything in the ground. For instance, the poolhouse upgrade that will be getting done at the end of this season, twenty twenty-two, has probably been at least four years in the works. So I want to give a little perspective there. And again, at the end, racing towards this year, we did not get enough information out to satisfy council. So I do want to reiterate a few things. When Eric asked about the money, we have said it on a number of occasions that at this point in time, we're earmarking the money, some money from the grant, and that it represents three percent of the grant funding. So I don't see it as the, I'm sorry, the bond, thank you, three percent of the bond fund. So I don't see it as a choice of one or the other, but reserving a very, very small percentage to do something that's very important for the community. I know that one of the other things that I heard at our previous meeting is concerns about the economics and, as Eric mentioned and others, about escalating prices. So if we turn that around, I admit that's, that is an issue, but we have projects that we have not really started. We have grant partners, particularly with Alcatlan and national funding, that should we face these? I expect that we're going to get the help that we need because all communities will be facing this. At this point in time, if we turn the concerns about what's going on with the economy to our own community, higher gas prices, higher food prices mean less vacationing and more time close to home. So I think that it makes it even more important to consider. Beyond that, parks are not just playgrounds for kids. All of the community, I mean, Eric just admitted he would like to be playing on those, on that court. And there, just the green space reduces stress, even if it's not used, just to have it in the neighborhood. It anchors our neighborhoods. Parks, recreational space, anchors our neighborhoods. And it attracts, it can attract new homeowners, and it can increase property values, which then in turn increases our revenue. So they are good investments just as much as infrastructure, and we are asking again for a very, very small percentage. So one of the main reasons, I think, for Linwood, Eric actually talked about some of them, but the Linwood Parklet is the furthest away, the neighborhood that is served by Linwood is furthest away from Crafton Park. And, and it's in greatest need. One of the other things is, is where we've had a number of people have been saying, well, what if we do a little bit of this, a little bit of that, a little bit of the other thing. Philip has talked to me over the years about the cost of redeployment, that you get one thing started, but then you come back two or three years later and you have to redeploy. And of course, higher costs at those times. So those are some of the other reasons. At the end of the day, we have been hearing that everyone has different ideas about what we ought to do with this particular grant. I asked Rick Minsterman, who is our lead engineer, about that. Could, could we, could we make changes to, to this grant at this time? And he did, he wrote an extensive email back that somebody can read if, if we need to, but basically, again, this was put in motion and there really isn't enough time. So tonight, I think what we're really voting on is whether we're willing to move forward with this grant substantially as it is or whether we want to defer at least a year to stand back, get more information, and, and then apply at a later date. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. LaVassar.
All right, thank you, Mayor Perry. Thank you to the steering committee. Thank you to council. I'm apologize for not being here last meeting, but I did watch the video and I read through the report. And on all fronts, I think everybody's been doing a wonderful job, steering the committee from deliberating the facts, and now we're here to talk about strategy and the tactics to get us across, you know, the finish line, which is the community good. So with that, I'd like to make some of my comments about, you know, and have a dialogue with council as a whole here about, you know, what is our strategy? Look at the big picture, have an open and honest conversation. Because do I believe that is wise for us to apply for this grant cycle? I would say after learning from, you know, our partners at Gateway, this cycle is worthwhile due to the economics behind the DCR funding that goes behind it. And I think the engineer that's present can probably go further into the economics, and I'd like him to talk about that because once I understood the dynamics and the mechanics of how these funding processes work, I think it will put everybody's mind at ease and help us wisely budget for the improvements. The scope of the improvements, I think that's up for debate. I think there's probably some minor wiggle room to consider some different elements. But what I understood, and Dennis, you can correct me here, this funding from DCR is coming out of state funds that were garnered through real estate sales and due to the interest rate environment, that pool of funding is as rich as it's ever been. So that five hundred thousand dollar threshold and below takes advantage of that funding. Whereas above, you know, we are eligible for other grant opportunities of which we did get some of those grant funds through the feds and DCR for the poolhouse, which we're making extensive investment on our part, which is three hundred thousand dollars to Crafton and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the, the federal fund, and there may be some flexibility there. So when it comes down to synergies, like how can we work some of these elements that the community is calling for into a master plan or a master investment plan and how to consider stormwater improvements and leveraging Alcatlan funds or, which is the Grow Program or the Growing Greener Funds from the state? I, I think there's just some, needs to be some more discussion. And so once we have this vote on this, I don't think the conversation ends. I think we need to have a longer range strategy. So what I'm proposing after I, after review is more discussion this evening about which elements we, where we want to see funded, but I would, you know, propose that we go for the funding and then figure out, all right, we have three years to take advantage of this. That means there may be an opportunity for us to, in our strategy, to come up with the funds to match this in other ways. It doesn't necessarily have to be coming from the bond. So that may be other creative ways, public, private partnerships, as I've mentioned in park meetings or sales of properties, whatever that may be. We, or with just looking at the budget, trying to find room in the general fund. However, we come up with those proceeds, we have three years. We don't have to get it done in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. We can take as long as, what, up to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven to fulfill the obligations. Is that what I understand? If this grant were awarded, you'd be notified November, December of this year. An actual grant agreement wouldn't be put in place most likely until December, January, maybe of twenty twenty-three. With that, there's three years from then, so it would be through twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and all of twenty twenty-five with this specific grant opportunity. Yeah, so going back to my colleagues here, I, I just think we need to understand what our strategy is going to be, but this conversation, and we need to continue the conversation after this vote, and we need to be strategic and tactical about how we're going to leverage and try to leverage these DCR funds or any other funds against other grants. And I'll, I'll use Aetna as a model. They've been doing a great job, especially around their eco, eco district. And, you know, Gateway was one of the consultants that helped out with that, and I've walked that project with them, and they were able to use state grant funds to match against federal funds and, and other funds. And the thing is, very little of that eco district is actually coming out of Aetna Borough's pocket. So I think we need to just continue to have open dialogue. And now that I've said that, I'd like to hear some of, you know, other people's perspectives because I, you know, from what I understand, there's interest in investing in, you know, Clearview Trail, Creekside Trail, even, you know, the, the parks, multi-use, pardon me, the Public Works Department area. And just try to figure out like what we see long range. And again, we don't have to have that, all that discussion tonight, but are there any elements out of the other plans that council feels passionately about? And, you know, given that we only have a week, what is reasonable expectation? Have another pre-app application discussion with the DCR for, because from what I understand, in order for us to sort of move forward here to make any types of addendums, we're gonna need to have another pre-application conversation with the DCR. Is that correct?
Yes, part of the process, one of the requirements of the DCR application is that you have that initial pre-application meeting. So once we were given the initial kind of guidance of the plan of action, we did have that kickoff meeting with DCR, so we would want to go back to them, make sure to discuss any potential changes or adjustments to this grant opportunity just to make sure that they're on board before making that submission next week.
Thank you.
May I speak to just the financial thing to underscore something that Philip said?
Okay.
About the grant sources. Basically, everything he says is correct and that we do have the opportunity to look for other ways to match it. It's just that at this moment in time, the most apparent and affordable, so finance is saying, yes, those funds are there, that we do have a way to match because we have an obligation if we're going to approve the resolution for the grant, to know that we can match it. But it doesn't, it does not need to stop there, and I just, just wanted to underscore that. Thank you.
May I make a comment, President?
Sure.
Mr. Luxbucker, you're in the room? You and your family have been involved for a long time in Crafton, and I was witness, was it twenty fifteen, I believe, where Crafton Borough was put in the very difficult position due to the economic situation to turn back five hundred thousand dollars back to DCR. And I will say, we don't want to be in that position. That leaves a bad taste in the grantor's mouth. So, you know, I would say council needs to be confident that they feel good about these projects, and they're going to try every which way, if you vote yes, to fulfill the commitment because you don't want to have another black stripe on Crafton Borough saying, well, here we are and we, we declined another grant. And then there are other opportunities down the road, but due to the funding source that's coming through, through DCR from the in-house capital that been collected, it, it is, it's not a bad idea to go forth with that. And then there's other opportunities for these other programs or visions that are here in this document to talk about some of the federal funding. And I'd like, you know, Dennis, if you could please tell us a little more and give us the backstory and what qualifies, what doesn't, and, and sort of help us, you know, get that backstory.
And Dennis, if you could move the mic a little bit closer so we can hear you.
Is that good? All right. And I'll address the one first point is Phil had mentioned specifically about kind of DCR and their funding. This was one thing, we've been talking to DCR throughout the process of the master site development plan, with that being the idea that an application would be presented at this time. And they have stated exactly that, that due to the way that they are funded and their grant is funded, that they do have a good amount of money right now, and now is the time to kind of submit applications or apply for, apply for funding. So that was one thing that was pretty, pretty clear in the, in the discussions with them along the way. In regards to what they are looking for within the grant, and I did have additional conversation with them even after last Thursday, specifically, it does have to be, have some type of recreation component involved. The other big thing is to follow kind of. Um the other big thing is to follow kind of that plan that was just put in place. A J did a good job of kind of going through and explaining it. I hopefully everybody's had a chance to kind of look through that to a certain extent to this point. But that that is supposed to be kind of the guiding document and all along, D C and R has kind of. Stated that they they would approve something moving for or. I I don't want to put words in their mouth that they would approve it, but that they would feel most strongly for something. That was addressed and went through the public process of the master site development plan process. Um and uh along those lines, um. Again, it's primarily focused around kind of the recrea- recreation aspect. So um. The the steering committee did end up looking at it at the last meeting in order to try to uh try to proceed. There was an exercise in order to try to. Identify the phased approach and a- along the way, Lynwood was looked at as one of the ones with the most needs. And and that's that's why that was identified first. Um the Noble was kind of the the second in line and trying to. At the meeting, at least it was identified as the uh essentials, which the essentials included some of the ADA, the lighting. But then in discussion with D C and R, there may need to even be a little bit of adjustment there to make sure that there is a recreation component. So that's just something to keep in mind, just if there is any adjustment made. Just adjusting to only include ADA, for instance, would not be something that they would look as favorably on. ADA in conjunction with a recreation aspect or lighting in conjunction with a recreation aspect is something that they would look for. But happy to answer more questions as needed to, or if you have follow-up filled to that.
Yeah, can I ask another question? I'm just full of questions.
We we need to give the rest to council too, but go ahead.
W- with regards to future funding sources with as it pertains to D C and R and the federal side, the threshold of five hundred thousand and over. Can you add some color to that, please?
And uh that was something that we just dealt with with uh Bath House and the uh when we initially applied for that. That five hundred thousand dollar threshold is typically essentially the threshold that D C and R would fund directly out of the state funding. Anything above that typically gets pushed to L W C F, which is federal funding. It's still through the avenue of that D C and R application. But there are uh geez, additional strings uh strings attached to that in which um. Anything that is funded that way does become a uh L W C F site or a six F site in perpetuity. So Crafton Park, as we found out throughout that process, is already considered an L W C F six F site because of um. Grants, applications or grant funding that was submitted in the past for the pool. And so because of that, that means it's open to open to all, not just um residents of Crafton. There are other stipulations such as that. So that five hundred thousand dollar threshold is typically the threshold there, but. As we talked about with that, there is an opportunity to potentially ask for additional funding after it's granted, being that there's. A specific need, or in that case, we did request more than the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grant funding initially. And then uh because that that request was made. Now, if somebody else were to turn back funding, there's a possibility that we can get additional funding for that one.
Anybody else from council have questions or discussion? Justin?
Yeah, so uh first I have a um, I guess it's more of a process question. I just want to understand. So if we. If uh, you know, if the motion passes and we request this grant and theoretically in December, we we get the full amount that we asked for. What's um kind of how was uh like, I think to Philip's point, right? How do we then deliberate on uh? When and where to like start distributing and and approving those certain uh improvements that were outlined in the plan, right? Cause I know that like towards the end of the plan, there is the list of uh kind of each of the improvements and components and just kind of like some estimated costs, right? What's the um, what's the process look like for um prioritizing what? The like out of those component, what out of those improvements, what uh how do we? How do we prioritize that? Is that something council ends up deciding on or is that in the hands of of Gateway and a committee or I just curious there?
I think, aren't we, excuse me, submitting already the information to go into the grant that would be those specific items?
Yes, that that would be needed in terms of this submission. So the master site development plan is. Separate from this submitted application, so they wouldn't necessarily fund us for everything within this, but. Whatever we would be applying for, we would have to be somewhat specific in terms of. The needs that we are addressing and what we're providing within this grant application and that's.
Cause because the scope is the ince- essential improvements, right, around ADA and accessibility and some of the other pieces for specifically. Again, as it's stated on the agenda and on the grant application, Lynwood and Noble Park. So are is that something you guys are? Like filtering down to like the specific work that would get done? In that for that that five hundred, if we got, again, if we got approved for the whole amount, five hundred thousand dollars worth of work, is that?
That this would all be considered as one kind of one project in itself. So whatever we would be applying for here would not be then. Phased out from that point would be one proposed project for that roughly five hundred thousand dollars worth of work.
Dennis, it might be helpful. We had our pre-application meeting with them. We kind of outlined some of the what we were um looking to put into the grant. Could you go over? Those uh those scope?
Sorry, if I can get my computer back up.
Because during while you're doing that, what the co- what the D C and R counterpart does is then he goes to his team and they have a discussion. Um and in fact, there's been follow-up from our initial um uh pre-pre-application meeting. Um so it's it it's a, it is fluid, but um the the basis of those, that meeting is uh that pre-application meeting is what is going to be in the grant.
So basically, it's already been decided on.
Well.
Or recommend.
Recommended that we looked at Lynwood for um. The improvements there and then uh Noble um lighting was one that had had been mentioned. Um. So now within Lynwood or let's just use Noble, um there's a splash pad, maybe instead of. This is just all hypothetical, you know, instead of new play surface or uh redoing the the basketball service. We shift that to to the uh splash pad. So within the park, you can make. Changes as long as they're recreational um changes. You ready, Dennis?
Yes.
Good, all right.
And um a- and this was kind of again from that very last meeting that we had with the steering committee. Um these items were brought out through that exercise. So for the phase one uh improvements that were recommended for Lynwood. And it was focusing on the majority of Lynwood, really the only thing if you're, if you were to look at the. Uh overall master site development plan for Lynwood, the item that was not included was. The playground area because there were improvements that were recently made to that playground surface. So we wouldn't want to uh remove that entirely. But the improvements were uh the additional play area, which it's another play area with a lot of um. Concrete improvements and that was kind of focused on like a backyard feel of uh kind of backyard games and things of that nature. And that's in the. Um uh southwest corner of that site. The big portion and as uh as A J kind of mentioned with the different outlines that were brought up from the. Master site development plan, the steering committee, um accessibility was a big thing in all of them. So again, that can't be all that you apply for for a uh D C and R grant, but is also a requirement of any D C and R grant that you apply for. So that's a big portion of that. And with everything in Pittsburgh being very topographically challenged. We know that it's going to be an effort there as well um due to the the grade changes. Um so that's an item, a new parking lot, um what was referred to as a lounge area. And again, that's more for the adults, maybe more so than the uh the kids and that included um like lounge sheet areas as well as a fire pit for for use. Um uh portable seasonal restroom was identified there. And again, the we are getting into the minutia a little bit here, but that would be what we would use to outline the the cost estimate uh that we would be providing. And as we're getting into that, some of these more more specific details, a lot of those items are what can be changed. But the ADA improvements or kind of the overall guide of what is listed in here as to why that work was being done. That's what would be difficult to change. Um but uh the pedestrian pool lights, again, that was a safety aspect that was considered throughout that uh throughout that park. And then the uh the court lighting in order to allow additional use of the courts. So I think I covered just about everything and that that is again, the majority of the work that was outlined for Lynwood Parks throughout the process. Um from there, um Noble Park was considered and the essentials package that was kind of at least outlined. That's that's where I spoke to the items that were primarily ADA again, which we know ADA is an item that would need to be included if we're including any um. Uh any park and then uh the lighting. So lighting was mainly to get a some additional use out of that um. Out of the court surface there, but that is where there would need to be an adjustment made there in terms of. The grant application, just to make sure that we are including some type of recreation um. Recreation aspect there, whether or not it would be just re-line striping the court to allow for other types of play other than just basketball. Or something along those lines, but u- ultimately, as we've talked about it with the schedule and with the flexibility, D C and R said. You know, they'd like to think of themselves as being fairly rigid in terms of, you know, they want you to. To show what your needs are and what you're applying for because of that. But at the end of the day, they do have some flexibility as long as it's not. You're saying that you're going to do something here and you do something totally across town, something totally different that is not helping or not, not solving that problem. But like the lighting aspect for Noble was one that they brought up of if you swapped out lighting for something totally different in terms of a recreation aspect. Then that would be something that would be um, you know, favored or or looked favorably upon.
When it comes to that flexibility, is that again decisions that council would end up making or is that be chosen by some committee or? How like if there needs to be flexibility or a shift, what is that? How is that decided?
Council would make a direction to staff do do act whatever shift would be proposed.
Fair enough. Go ahead.
Excuse, A J would like to say something from the audience.
A J Schwartz, environmental planning design. I just want to add uh to something that Danny started. And I know Vince, you had. For today, Lynwood. When you look at kind of the list that Danny went through, th- there's probably a little more emphasis on Lynwood. In order to address the ADA accessibility issues, there's some grading and some site preparation stuff that needs to be done that is kind of unique to Lynwood. You don't necessarily have that in Noble. So to replace a sidewalks or build a parking lot. At Lynwood in kind of draw the line there, doesn't actually really address some of the issues that the steering committee was trying to deal with. So there's some other costs that have to get carried over if you go that route. And then by the time you're at that point. As Danny said, you really are addressing the majority of what uh were the suggestions, the recommendations for Lynwood. So. Lynwood, Lynwood's the one that is unique in that in that case. The other ones have much more flexibility. Lynwood. The topography is the topography and we have to deal with the topography.
Great, thank you, Justin.
And the one other question, kind of like theme, whatever I wanted to bring up or ask. So um assuming that, you know. That we wouldn't want to get ourselves in a situation where we have to give grant money back again, right? Cause that would be, I guess, worst case, right? We don't do. We don't do it. We earmark the money. We don't do any of the work. We give it back and we get this bad mark um from D C and R, which we don't want. Would the second worst case scenario be, you know, that we find ourselves having to pay for this out of the general fund or? Or, you know, if we go to do budgeting later and we didn't have this money lined up, that we would have to find another way to to raise that money. Is that right?
Remember too, that we would already have to give up uh or pay two hundred and fifty, no matter what. So it would be two fifty. And then we would just not have the other two fifty.
Right. So if we find ourselves down the road needing that two fifty, then we would have to find a way to make that revenue up. Whether that's changing, raising millage or something at some point to make up that difference.
Yes.
So I as as important as I know, all parks and all this stuff is to all of council and to. The folks on the steering committee and all of the community members who gave input. I think you're very heard. We we appreciate all the work you did. Just understand that. Um, you know, as we make this decision, one of the worst cases could be that millage may have to go up at some point to make up for. Projects like this. So I know that high taxes are another uh big concern, people who live in the borough. So.
Yes. Thank you, Justin. Anybody else? To that point, Justin, I want to make, as I mentioned at the prior meeting, is that. You know, the taxes are, we we are making decisions for the future. Um we don't know with inflation, with gas, with everything happening in the future, that this commitment, this is a commitment for us for the future of two hundred and fifty thousand. There are grants that we only have to match fifteen percent. Um they do vary. This is making a commitment to to parks. And ultimately, all the money is taxpayer money. So whether it's from the the bond or wherever, it's taxpayer money. Even grant money is taxpayer money. So that that all comes from there. So we make a decision. And we have to look at the whole community as a whole and what we've heard and is this important for the community going forward? I also want to emphasize, we have a lot of projects, probably going to L G A, we have more projects than a lot of the communities going on. Right now, from our source, the infrastructure, which Eric had mentioned, um and Public Works Building, not to mention everything that could happen in the future that we don't even know about. Um if there's a sinkhole, if if we have a flood or a major project that needs money, we will have to somehow pay for that. So um decisions we make today, you know, potentially commit us, although we can pull out the grant, but there there are consequences for that. Any other questions or discussion?
May I or have I asked too many questions?
You you have asked too many questions, actually, but you may go.
Thank you. I'm just.
You're making up for the other meeting and we said you can ask a thousand questions.
Thank you.
Like.
So I I'm just looking for, because I wasn't here for the lively discussion. And I'm looking for, you know, for people to put their cards on the table and say, you know, the projects that were selected and that were represented. During that uh pre-app meeting, now do they, if they. Reflect the the will of this council or is there, you know, do people want to see something else? Um be slided in there. I'm just looking for some feedback from my colleagues as to what, how people are, you know, looking at what's, you know, currently before us. Um and and from my understand, a motion can be changed like and we can direct, even though we have what, it would be a week. And it would take you a few days to talk to to have a conversation with D C and R like. You know, is there interest, you know, in the current projects? Is this what we have and this is the only thing we can talk about? Or can we have a conversation about, is there anything else in this menu of awesome, you know, projects and like, wh- how many millions of dollars of projects are here? I mean, there's thirteen million? Fifteen million dollars, like are, is this where we want to to spend the money? And is is there anything that can go into a grader strategy to sort of hit on all the high notes or? I'm I'm just, again, I'm just looking for input. I saw um Councilman uh Vince's uh. Email and, you know, he mentioned Clearview and then there's also like a park side, you know, Creekside and then there's uh, you know, we hear. From another committee member about a dog park. I'm I'm just curious, you know, what everybody else are is thinking.
Yeah. Um, so I still stand with my yes um being in favor of this. Uh I do think it is important. Um and I think given what we've been uh discussing, that this is a good time to go for this. Um I did go and look at both parks last week being uh no boy drive pass every day and Lynwood I actually got out and walked up into. Um for the first time in many years and um I believe that my main.
concern with Lynwood Park is the fact that it definitely needs accessibility. I think that that's probably the biggest hang up with that park, in my opinion. There were kids playing in the park when I went through. You know, definitely seemed to be having a good time on the new equipments. That was good. Noble Park could also definitely use some love, but inside, outside of those two, really, after hearing about what had been discussed for, you know, potentially where this grant money would go for Lynwood and Noble, the only, the only thing that I thought, you know, I thought a fire pit, that's, I just, that's something that I didn't notice in the plans. I'm sure it's in there. I just didn't notice it. But anyway, that, that maybe in the court lighting aren't necessarily something that I feel is as important as obviously accessibility. But being that our parks are currently closed at dusk, court lighting not necessarily as important to me, but I do sympathize with the fact that it does get darker earlier in the fall. So, you know, outside of that, the only thing that I would change personally would be I, as well as many other community members would love to see a dog park. I would be thrilled to see that somewhere, anywhere really. Crafton Park would be great location, I think. But other than that, I think outside of that particular item, I think I'm still, you know, in favor of this as a yes, after looking at the two parks.
May I ask about dog parks in recreation? Is that considered recreation?
Dog parks have been funded in the past. Yeah. So that, that would be something that has been.
I'm not sure if this is something to address now or after we've decided on the grant, but in terms of lighting, those parks are really close to people's homes. Have we talked to the people who live there? Have they talked to us? Does anybody express any, cause I like the idea of them being available after dark. But again, which someone I believe it was Mayor Perry who mentioned it last week with after dark comes noise pollution. And have these people expressed any positive, negative, any kind of feedback regarding that?
AJ, have, as part of the study, has anybody addressed that?
There's been no specific reach out to any immediate residents. AJ Schwartz, environmental plan design. There was no specific reach out to any residents. That would be something typically you would do as you're beginning, if the grant was fortunate and you were starting to do detailed plans, that you would do that then. Would, there's a lot of lighting choice.
It's something we could.
Correct, correct. And, and typically, by today's standards, the, the lighting and light pollution, you're something that from an engineering standpoint, you now have a lot of options how to control. That's less of an issue. The question of the noise, if games are playing till ten o'clock, that's a different issue. And I think I had acknowledged there are some things is the, the dogs are not allowed in the parks. You know, you'd have to change the, 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 the closure timeframe. That does not have to be done before the grant. That's something that we also discussed just to make sure that there was nothing that you had to go do ahead of time. That can happen as over that three-year period that Danny was, was earlier referring to.
Just one other thing Dennis and I had talked about, I think we may have just discussed it after the meeting last week. I had asked him about if we got the grant for the two parks and then realized that there was something somewhere else that was of detriment, like to be taken care of. If we could put a clause into the grant asking, you know, kind of like a caveat, like if something came up, and I believe the answer was no, correct?
It was that, that gets back to DCNR's specific response was that they do try to be a little bit more rigid in that, that they want to focus. Now, if it was a specific issue being addressed or like, I, I think ADA was the one that was discussed. And it was something that we hadn't brought up, but that is one thing that was incorporated within the most recent bathhouse grant, for instance, for Crafton Main Park, so that the ADA improvements are being made specifically for the bathhouses part of that. So i- i- it was one of those items where they said that they're going to be more rigid in that, that they wouldn't want you to necessarily pick two parks and then switch to another park or just say, we want to make improvements in all the parks, just to leave it more open as a, that you catch everything. But at the same time, you know, i- if it was something very specific, something that's captured in here and then some, something that obviously became a big need because of the time lapse within it, then it could be considered.
Thanks.
So I'm sure everyone saw my email. I laid out a little framework. Aaron and I went around to all the parks, looked at all the parks and just kind of brainstormed, looked at the report. We did agree that Noble and Lynwood need some loving, but we also really thought Clearview is a unique opportunity, especially with that funding going into the Pittsburgh side. If we have a nice side, if we could make our side nicer, more accessible, I really think that would go far. In the report, it said that Clearview Trail is used much more by a two-to-one ratio than any, any of the parklets. And it is used by people of all ages where the parks maybe only, only be used by basketball, people playing basketball or families of young kids. So I really think investing in Clearview would be a a good thing overall for the community.
Could, could we ask AJ to, to speak to the whole trail issue? And you'll see that it's, the thoughts are that it's being addressed in a different way.
So when we did the last AJ Schwartz, environmental plan design, so when we did the last sticker exercise, I, I forget these things. There's protocols. He made Eric give his whole full address. The, the, the last sticker here exercise was try to drill into importance. And it wasn't necessarily getting to the level of detail of pedestrian lighting versus sports lighting, but trying to get an understanding, a sense from the steering committee in terms of everybody's thoughts on what are those important areas that need some improvements. Lynwood and Noble rose to the top. Clearview was in that discussion. There's a lot of focus. And again, to what you had pointed to, the, the resident usage and what people had expressed through the surveys. So there's a lot of discussion. What everybody in the steering committee settled on is there was another way to fund Clearview improvements. There's other grants that are probably, you can be actually really competitive on. And some of them through DCNR, some of them through other sources. So the, what I think people had kind of settled on, if there was early improvements. So, you know, some early implementation through potentially the, the DCNR grant this round to keep that focused on the, the projects that don't necessarily have as many potential immediate funding sources. Cause the trail stuff could happen, you know, of a variety of different ways. That was the thought, you know, in terms of what people had talked about.
Quick question, is there a timeframe on when that funding was available or?
Which, which funding, other funding sources?
For like, for the Clearview Trail.
So we'll take, again, there's a different DCNR grant for trails. You go into a different bucket, Dennis, if I'm not saying this correctly, these are AJ words, so I don't use all the official DCNR descriptions. But they have kind of, over the years, have kind of separated some dollars specifically for trails. You're competing against other trail projects. That would be one that you would want to take a look at. Now, I don't know if that can happen in the same three-year cycle. Because I think it falls under the C two P two, unless you go after a, a Greenways and Trails type of grant.
Yeah. And that, that was a specific question and actually something that came up in the initial DCNR. They, they took a while to maul that over and consider it, but really the, the one issue, Clearview would fall into that. But there was a look at potentially putting a trail system throughout the entire municipality. That was part of the discussion with the entire group. And at that time, that's, that's not really considered through DCNR because we're talking about a lot of like on-road trails or like sidewalk connector systems. But they did, they did reference us to a, a peer review program through DCNR, which that one doesn't have that same deadline of next week. So that one can be applied for at any time. There's also the DCED Greenways Trails Program, which that's due May, May thirty-first, and that one only has a fifteen percent match associated with it. So that was something that was discussed.
And that's the one I, I would highly recommend you start working on now, because that's the one you would be competitive on. And that, that, that some of, there's also PENDOT grants, like multimodal that you could go after. Those is Dennis had described on, on the LWCF types of grants. There's more strings attached. You're, you're now treating it like a PENDOT project. So the costs tend to be more expensive than if you stayed with the CFA or, or with the DCNR. So there's, there's a couple there that literally in this year, you could be going after and potentially doing real design and engineering, the detailed design and engineering, not just the master plan level and then do improvements. So those are just two examples and PENDOT could be further down the road. There's probably a few others in, in terms of lesser amounts, but I, I think the ones that Danny had mentioned are the, are the big ones.
Thank you.
Can I ask the manager to, to speak a little bit to some of the things that we could be doing in-house? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just real quick, like that information would have been really useful. You know, before last, last week's meeting, have the, the whole plan laid out. As to why and where funding can be coming from. It's kind of hard to look at the big picture when you just give this little, little aspect, little piece of it.
So then, then it's a good point that we, we, there's one part that we have to insert in the document, which is the potential funding sources. We're going to give a menu of all those different funding sources. Customarily, we try not to pinpoint specifically which type of recommendation or improvement is which grant you should go after for that improvement. Because again, I'm going to use, Eric tried to steal my thunder earlier. Sometimes there's opportunities that arise that were unexpected. And if it's manna from heaven, whatever. It, you gotta be flexible. You will see though, on that menu of, there's a variety of things that a lot of these recommendations could fit under that type of grant, that type of grant or that type of grant. And you kind of have to, is just what you're going through right now, is starting to piece together a, a, a strategy and a set of recommendations based on the grant that's in front of you. Cause you need to tune it to the strengths of the grant or the orientation of the grant and figure out what your strengths are in terms of these proposals, these recommendations that you have. So.
Ms. Perry.
I was going to ask you if the, if Doug, you could speak to some of the possibilities of things that we may be able to do in-house in the nearer term to improve the conditions on Clearview. You had mentioned that, I think at one or the other of our task force meetings. What we could do in-house with Public Works to, to improve it a bit in the interim.
Yeah, in the interim, there's a lot of non-native species that are growing on that trail. We've identified that as to, to clear those, open the trail up more. So those are in-house improvements can be done this year, this summer.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yes. So I, I like talking about strategy. So Mr. President, you have been talking about the finite resources that we have and the number of projects that we have. And hearing the conversation, you know, the question is, you know, are we taking too much of a shotgun approach to applying for things and being strategic? For instance, out of all these plans or, you know, I'll say series of mini plans and for these different sites, what is, you know, council's strategy? Like what are we going to tell the community? Like what are we looking to create a multi-use facility, multi-use field facility? And that's where we're going to focus for the next five years. Or we're going to focus on the trail networks and connectivity, which is an element out of the thrive plan, like where do we want to, you know, what is our visioning? For the next five years with how we're going to make the improvements to the parks? And what kind of budget do you think we're, we're going to be looking at? And I think we probably can't even answer that question tonight. So again, I like that the parks, the greenways and the, what's, so the DCD funding? Could you talk a little more about that? Yeah. And I, I actually, I'm referring back to a little opportunities package that I think we put together for Crafton back in February. Just kind of going through all potential grant opportunity. And we try to do that on a monthly basis with the grants that are moving, knowing your kind of list of existing projects currently too. But that DCED, it's called Act thirteen Greenways Trails and Recreation Program. Essentially, it's built for projects which involve planning, acquisition, development, rehabilitation, repair of greenways, recreation trails, open space, parks and beautification projects. So that's, I've seen in the past, people even try to use that as a match for some DCNR kind of funding or kind of using it for, like we talked about trails and a focus on trails, because that's where you can be very competitive in, in that. And, and that kind of project approach.
Through seven sources, they had seven grants, two and a half million dollar improvement, seven grants. What Dennis just said is true. The, part of the strategy is they got a CFA grant. That's the DCD grant. It was larger amount, less match, the eighty-five fifteen. They use that as seed money because it's, it's allowable. They use that as the match then for DCNR, which they got a, a Greenways and Trails grant. So it, it was kind of a boxcaring, building a train with a whole series of different cars. And from their perspective, part of their strategy was to lessen their cash outlay. You know, part of the discussion you guys were having, they were very strategic about, in terms of doing that. They didn't wait and say, let's do the DCD first. Again, when the grants come about, they decided, should we go after this? Do we have projects? They went after it. It was after then they got a notification that they were going to proceed to the next round or they were going to be a recipient. Then they decided, they sat down and said, here's this pool of money. How do I divide up the, the pool to maximize investments that we get? Or to lessen how much we have to put in to the kitty? So they, they, they cast that net and said, we're trying to go after anything that was available. If it's not bolted down, they applied for it. They, they went after absolutely everything and that's how they approached it. But they cast the net wide. And they just had to go look at that particular grant and say, okay, which, which improvements fit under the, kind of that guise or fit into that program nicely. And then they strategized in terms of how to, to make that presentation, to make that, that pitch.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I guess I'll go real quick. So I just kind of doing quick math in my head, right? If the master site plan has fifteen-ish million dollars worth of proposed improvements across all the properties and it's a fifteen-year, year plan, you know, we're, we're essentially going to be moving at a cadence of, you know, almost a million dollars a year-ish to achieve all of it in the timeframe that the plan has been laid out. And I mean, I, I, I guess I'm kind of conflicted, like, yeah, it would be great to move on, you know, a quarter million. Where we get, where we get that match, right? We should, we could double our money and we could get moving on some of these things now, especially the essential things, the, the accessibility. It's just, I guess we're going to have to think longer term about how budgetarily we're going to achieve, you know, that million dollar mark a year, if we're going to achieve a plan like this in that amount of timeframe. And yeah, and just kind of hearing, hearing, you know, the, the, the trails one, you know, it's a fifteen percent match. But then like on the, you know, Alka-San projects and stuff, we're getting a sixty-five to eighty-five percent match, which is quite a bit better of a multiplication of our money, right?
So I don't know what other.
It was, you're only putting up 15%, they're putting up eighty-five.
Yeah, that's quite a bit better than, okay, right.
For the Greenways Trails DCED one, yeah, you you would only put up 15%. They would.
That makes a lot more, that's a lot better of, okay, yeah, that's why this one is a fifty fifty match. Yeah, the DCNR is the fifty, yeah, fifty fifty. See, here's me operating off of assumptions, not understanding what the numbers mean. So, yeah, no, thanks for the clarification.
And as a reminder to that, you know, this year and last year, we did have ARPA funds, which we will not have going forward. So that will need to be made up at some point, some way to be looking at that, to be from residents or from the community. Right. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, Vince.
So Colton mentioned dog park and looking at the report, there's a lot of desire for dog park. I know I would love to see a dog park. Is there plans in the, for any funding for that coming up shortly or?
That's one thing. Again, the fact that it was identified so heavily in there. One of the items that was discussed during that meeting was that the dog park itself, they were hoping that enough of it could be done without significant grant funding or match where it is just kind of fencing off an area. And so that was the hope and that was why it wasn't identified in this first round or this first phase. But that's something that we'll always continue to keep, keep track of other specific grants. That would be something that would fall into that Greenways Trails grant potentially as a, you know, parks and open space improvement. So there, there's a number of grants or some that are more loosely open, like the LSA grant, which was earlier this month, which was just a kind of make general, there was no kind of guidance behind it. So there's a lot of those kind of grants too that will come available. And so that's where anything within that plan would kind of be looked at as the next step. But the the process and at the at the meetings, a lot of the discussion was that that could potentially be improvements that can be made without having to do grant funding. It could be through just the.
I was going to say AJ had mentioned it a bit before with a Pendot multimodal. The different funding sources adds different strings. So what we could do in-house for just say 50,000 by getting a grant turns into a hundred thousand dollar project. So sometimes it's not, you know, grants are not all what they're cracked up to be. A dog park, that's something that we can put into to the 2023 budget. So yes, we, grant money is not free money by any stretch. They make you go through so many hoops and it increases the cost of the project. One and a half, two and a half, almost three times, depending on which funding source Pendot, you're going to be paying triple what you could do it in-house for. Don't quote that, so.
Right. Any other questions, comments? Great discussion. So there, does anybody want to make a motion to move to adopt the resolution two oh two two dash double eight, requesting a grant for 250,000 from the DCNR for phase one of Linwood and Noble Park renovation projects?
So moved.
Colton, second. Philip, second. So we've had a long discussion already. I think Colton had suggested a roll call vote, which we will do again, but we're going to flip the order of it because it's not fair to Aaron and to the earlier alphabet. And then future roll call votes will maybe start in the middle or something else so that it just makes it easier for everybody.
Yes, I want to talk to you about that. Yes, we, yeah. But for this one, we're going to have a roll call vote. We're going to start with Mr. Radilla.
No.
Mr. Oliverio.
No.
Mr. Marx.
Yes.
Mr. Labasser?
No.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
And Ms. Bolenbacher?
Yes.
Okay, it's three, three. Mayor, as as the solicitor had mentioned, yes, you are required to break the tie. We use that lifeline. So Mayor Perry.
I've been saying that if this came to a tie, I would vote against it. Because I feel that this council is conflicted. At the same time, I've been involved with this effort for four years. And I really support it. I am going to break the tie with a yes, even though I had said I would probably say no. I think it is really important to get this investment moving. I think that everybody's input has been important. I prob, I understand our borough finances more deeply than anyone else sitting here today. And I believe, A, that we can afford it. I believe that we need to make this investment. We need, we need to 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 start moving this forward because we had so many people come and participate in the study that said, yes, we want to see something happen with our recreation. And I believe, and I'm going to be charging all of us, our engineers, everyone involved, to help us by the time we get to the funding portion of this to have additional matches or other ways of funding this. So I'll break the tie to a yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, community announcements. Our next meeting is April 14th at seven fifteen. A lot of these announcements we said at our prior meeting. The next, or I'm sorry, April 28th, PA Rep Dan Deasy will be holding in council chambers right before our meeting from six to seven. He'd be meeting with constituents and that that was put out on Savvy Citizen for everybody. And also the Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April 2nd, April 16th at two. Be there early or you will not get any Easter eggs because the kids will scoop them up and you will not get any. Yeah, they, they run fast. At this time, citizens may address Crafton Borough Council on any issue. Only residents, taxpayers of the Borough of Council will be permitted to address the council. Speakers will be permitted to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Groups of people will be required to designate a spokesperson to represent them before the council, who may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Please sign in or raise your hand here or raise your hand on Zoom and state your name and physical address for the record. Anybody here? Eric? You have to go over. Oh, okay. Oh, of this. Okay, great.
Thank you. Colette, I just want to say to you, I know it's hard. I know it's hard. It's tough.
I think you're on.
In phase, out of phase. I'll speak loud.
There you go.
There you go. I just wanted to say to Colette, I know it's hard. And the work that's been put into this AJ, the entire committee, I know it's not easy to get there. I will say of everything in the plan, I think that extending nighttime lighting was never wholly discussed for courts as part of the committee. I will say that it's not a good idea to light a court that has a giant sinkhole in it. Invest that money in fixing that sinkhole in the middle of that court. Otherwise, I think it's great. It's a rough road ahead. Explaining and justifying that $250,000 is going to be settled at the ballot box. And that's what the community will do. But I think it's great. And I really appreciate you moving forward on this important work for the borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right. Anybody else present? Okay, anybody online to raise your hand on Zoom? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.